Good afternoon and welcome to the Thursday, August 8, 2019 work session for the Henrico County Public School Board. Welcome back, everyone. I know it seems like in many regards it was just a day or so ago and others, I hope everybody had a chance to get a good break. Members of the Board, you've seen the agenda and had a chance to review it. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The first item on the agenda is to exit to a closed session. A closed session for discussion of matters covered under items A1, A2, and A8 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended pertaining to the following: the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees; the admission and discipline of specific students, including a request for release from compulsory attendance; in consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice related to an employee contract. Members of the Board, is there a motion that we go into closed session for those purposes?
Some move.
It's been moved by Mrs. Augmiron. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. We'll now move to closed session for those purposes. Thank you. Members of the Board, it would be appropriate now that we have a motion to certify that only those items identified in the motion going into closed session were discussed while in closed session.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Been moved by Mrs. Cock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the first item is the recommendation that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-29 for violation of the Code of Student Conduct, and names of students are protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Thank you very much. Members of the Board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-29, which we discussed in closed session, and we had the material beforehand. Is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Augmiron. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries and the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. The superintendent recommends that the school board approve the expulsion of student case number 18-19-S-30 for violation of the Code of Student Conduct.
Members of the Board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding student 18-19-S-30. Is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Augmiron. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending that the school board approve participation in an alternative education program for student case number 18-19-S-30.
Members of the Board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding student case number 18-19-S-30 to attend an alternative education program. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Moved by Mrs. Cock. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries for the recommendation that the student 18-19-S-30 attend an alternative education program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm seeking approval that student case number 19-20-C-A-1 be approved for the release from compulsory attendance.
Members of the Board, is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation for approval for release from compulsory attendance for student 19-20-C-A-1?
Some moved.
It's been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The recommendation is approved.
Thank you. Next, I'm seeking approval for the following personnel items: the recommendation for the appointment of instructional personnel, 2019-2020; the request for non-continuation of contract, 2019-2020; request for release from contract, 2019-2020; and the request for discretionary leave, 2019-2020.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Members of the Board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation and request for approval of the personnel items that she's described. Is there a motion to adopt superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
It's been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries. And before we leave that, on behalf of the Board, I will just say, on behalf of all of us, I know we agree that we appreciate the hard work by HR and all the other administrators this time of year as we're trying to fill those last few positions, and "few" is the word we want to hear more about. So, thank you very much. I know it's a lot of hard work and it's a lot of tension this time of year, so, thank you.
We appreciate that. They've been working hard, and that brings me to my next recommendation, which is the approval of administrative personnel for the 2019-2020 school year. We do have a number of those coming forward this evening as we've worked to expeditiously fill those critical administrative roles in our schools for the start of the year.
And we thank you for that hard work, as well as your team. Members of the Board, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation, request for approval of administrative appointments, as she's outlined. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's request?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Augmiron. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll have an opportunity to meet our new administrators at our next school board monthly meeting. But in the meantime, I am pleased to announce that the following administrators have been approved by the Board: Holly Drake, Principal at Lakeside Elementary School; Vanessa Davis, Principal Twin Hickory Elementary School; Susan Prophet, Principal Holman Middle School; Michael Jackson, Principal Hermitage Middle School; Leisha Jackson, Associate Principal Greenwood Elementary School; Kristy Budney, Associate Principal Montrose Elementary School; Melinda Hammond, Associate Principal Brooklyn Middle School; Catherine Mormon, Associate Principal Tuckahoe Middle School; Jessica Burbick, Associate Principal Godwin High School; Tyler League, Associate Principal Hermitage High School; Brandon Petrowski, Associate Principal Tucker High School; Gilma Steele, Assistant Principal Freeman High School; Leah Widenhoft, Assistant Principal Glen Allen High School; Kendall Hunt, English Language Arts Specialist within Teaching, Learning, and Innovation; and Kimberly Marshall, an Educational Specialist within the Exceptional Education Department.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to all those folks on their new positions.
Thank you. All right, for the next item, we are going to receive an overview of the 2019 Henrico survey results. You'll recall that we're working to increase opportunities to hear from both our staff, our students, and our parents, and so we did begin that endeavor with what will be an annual survey, and we have the results from the 2019 survey. So Dr. Hinton is here to share those with us.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Dr. Cashwell, we conducted a survey in the spring of 2019, and we're here to share with you the results from those surveys. We have two guiding documents that are guiding the school improvement efforts of our school division. The first is Amy's Passport, and within that passport, there are next steps related to the implementation of an annual school climate survey to include components that relate to student, staff, and parent perceptions on safety, equity, and inclusiveness. We also have our 2018-25 Strategic Plan, and one of the implementation indicators of that strategic plan is to also administer a stakeholder climate survey to all teachers, staff, parents, as well as students in grades five through 12. So to administer the surveys, we partnered with the Metropolitan Educational Research Consortium and the School of Education at Virginia Commonwealth University. They supported us with developing the survey, administering it, and analyzing the survey results. The survey items were developed to align with the priorities of the strategic plan, as well as Amy's Passport, and all of the survey items aligned with the four cornerstones of the strategic plan. The survey was administered online from March through April to students, staff, and parents, and we offered the parents survey in six languages, including English, Spanish, Vietnamese, Nepali, Arabic, and Dari. We also had a paper survey of the survey available upon request. We had multiple communication efforts related to the survey administration. We had advanced publicity, including information posted on the HCPS website, as well as all of the individual school websites. We had 25 social media posts. We provided principals with communications for their families in both English and Spanish. We printed paper flyers that were sent home with all of our students in both English and Spanish. We had a media advisory, as well as reminders in the Binder E newsletter. Once the survey opened, we had 27 additional social media posts, a second media advisory. We continued to encourage principals to reach out to their families all throughout the survey administration. We also attended family engagement events, and we had tables set up for families to complete the survey online at those events as well. Overall, we had 34,620 survey respondents, and you can see the number of respondents by reporting group. You'll notice that our parent group is lower than we had hoped for. We had multiple surveys going on last year. We had Department of Education surveys, as well as an equity and diversity survey that had gone out a month prior. So we think that we were experiencing some survey fatigue, trying to get our families to engage in the survey process. But we are going to be working closely with our family engagement offices, as well as our communication office, to determine what we can do next year to increase our family engagement in the survey process. So when we look at our survey results, all of the survey items ranged from 1, completely disagree, to 6, completely agree. And so scores from 1 to 3 represent general disagreement with the item, or unfavorable responses, and scores of 4 to 6 represented agreement or favorable responses. The data that you have in your report are available by respondent group, students, families, and staff, and include the percent response for each item, as well as the item average response, and the combined percent of agree or disagree. Many of the survey items were asked across respondent groups, so we're able to do some comparisons against those groups, but some were unique to specific groups. So for example, we had a survey item that specifically asked about bus safety, whether students felt safe on the bus and at the bus stop. So that item was only asked to students. We also had items that were specifically designed to gather input from our families of students with disabilities, as well as our families who utilize our English language So I'm going to be focusing on the average response that we received, but the report does include the general percentage of agreements throughout the report. Again, the averages will range from 1 to 6, with scores from 1 to 3 representing disagreement or unfavorable, and scores from 4 to 6 representing agreement with the item or a favorable response. Each item on the survey was associated with one of the four cornerstones: safety and wellness, academic growth, equity and opportunity, and relationships. Safety and wellness included items related to areas such as building safety, or emergency preparedness, and mental health. Academic growth included items related to areas such as the Henrico learner profile and college and career planning. Equity and opportunity included items related to areas such as appreciation of different cultural backgrounds, culturally responsive teaching, and support of underrepresented groups in advanced courses. And relationships included items related to areas such as teacher and student relationships and family engagement. This slide shows the average response across all items that were included within those cornerstones, and you can see that, on average, all stakeholder groups favorably reported on each cornerstone. So you can see that all averages were in that agreement range from 4 to 6. Generally, students tended to have the least favorable responses across all the cornerstones, with the highest response for safety and wellness. Staff reported the highest levels of favorable responses to three of the four cornerstones, including academic growth, equity and opportunity, and relationships. On average, parents reported between a 4 and a 5, indicating slight agreement or mostly agree, for each cornerstone, with the highest favorable response for the relationship items. So the next four slides are going to be focusing on the highest and the lowest averages by each reporting group. And I do want to note that while these are the averages, it doesn't necessarily mean that these items were in that lower range of a 1 to 3. Some of these items were still in the higher range of 4 to 6, but when we looked across the whole survey, these were the items that came across lowest for that reporting group. So looking at the strengths related to our safety and wellness cornerstone, all of our groups, students, parents, and staff, felt that they knew what to do in an emergency. So emergency preparedness was ranked highly. Students and parents felt that they understood the consequences for breaking school rules. Another strength was related to students feeling like they had an adult in the school to go to if they needed help, as well as bus safety, again, feeling like they were safe on the bus and at the bus stop. Some areas of opportunity across all of our respondent groups were related to bullying, and we've seen that in past surveys conducted at the division. Other areas of opportunity included having a priority on student mental health within the building, providing students with opportunities to talk about their feelings, as well as the feelings of others, students feeling that they were treated fairly by adults in the school, parent awareness of the silence hurts anonymous reporting link. And that was interesting because our students said that they were very knowledgeable about that, so that is a little disconnect, but that's wonderful that our students felt like they knew about that link. Parents also said that an area of opportunity was related to communication about bus transportation. And then staff felt that they needed more support for behavior intervention programs within their buildings, that rules could be more consistently applied for behavior, as well as more frequent discussion regarding student conduct data. Looking at the strengths related to academic growth, we had strengths across students and staff feeling that there were high expectations for student learning. Students also felt that they had an awareness of career-focused courses, such as technology education, business, marketing, and family and consumer sciences, that could help prepare them for the future. All three reporting groups felt that students were encouraged to attend school daily, and parents felt that academic program materials were provided in languages that they were understandable to them. Staff also felt that they used assessment data to support student growth and learning. Some areas of opportunity were related to our Henrico learner profile, the four pillars related to deeper learning, providing student learning experiences that are community-supported, authentic and connected, and student-owned, as well as three of the six Cs that we're focusing on, related to quality character, critical thinking, and citizenship. So those are areas that we're continuing to work on throughout the division. Parents also shared that an area of opportunity would be more awareness of our literacy plan, providing parents more information about college and career pathways and prerequisites as early as elementary school, students feeling that the amount of homework was reasonable. And then staff had some items related to professional development needs. Looking at the strengths related to equity and opportunity, students felt that the adults in the building understood and appreciated different cultural backgrounds, and staff reported that they felt comfortable interacting with students and families from different backgrounds as well. They also had multiple items related to our English learner services. Parents felt that they were satisfied with those services, they felt like they were valued members of those teams, and that the staff had a good understanding of the needs of English learners. Some areas of opportunity included having materials that teach about different cultures, supporting students with disabilities and taking challenging courses, as well as encouraging all students across the division to enroll in specialized programs, such as IB or specialty And relationships. Some of the strengths that we noted in the survey were that staff felt that they got along with other people in their buildings, that adults cared about the students across the school division, parents felt that they were an active participant in their child's academic planning, and then staff reported that they felt that parents were welcome, that parents were kept updated on academic progress, that they received information about academic programs, and that the school sought parent support and involvement. Some opportunities related to relationships were related to students respective adults, as well as other students within the building, parent awareness of the HCPS strategic plan, and staff having more involvement in decision-making. So moving forward, we're going to be using these results to develop plans for addressing areas of opportunity. There will be a future presentation to address those areas that are noted within the report. We are also reconvening our HCPS strategic plan steering committee to review the findings from the survey report, as well as Amy's Passport, and suggest some revisions to that plan to ensure the alignment between these documents and our new data. We're also working with principals to communicate areas of strength and opportunity to school stakeholder groups, so that when our stakeholders return in the fall, we can engage them in conversations around this data. And school leadership teams will be revising their school improvement goals for 2019-20, focusing on the areas of opportunity, as well as the strengths of their data. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Members of the Board, do you have questions? Mr. Pike, please.
In regard to getting people to participate in the survey, when you do the social media posts, do we pay for those posts to boost them?
There were some that were paid for, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
If I might just add one note related to the participation rate, particularly from parents, and I know Dr. Hinton noted that the survey fatigue was an issue, and so not only will we be thinking about ways to advertise this survey opportunity to parents next year, but also taking a hard look at what we're asking of parents during the year, so that we can put priority on the surveys that we really need to get responses for. And so this survey, we knew was sort of a late arrival on the mix of a number of surveys that were already underway and going out, and so we anticipated that the data might not, or we may not get the response rate that we had hoped to, particularly from our parent group, but we wanted to go ahead and set the stage for and the precedent for beginning this important input-seeking process from our families.
Mrs. Cock?
Were there hard copies that were sent out through students and their backpacks and such, too? Or...
We had a paper copy that was available upon request, so if a parent needed a paper copy, they could certainly ask for one through the school.
Okay. I was just wondering if that also could have been a plague in there.
Particularly maybe in the elementary schools. I think our middle and high school parents have been trained somewhat to participate more aligned with their students' work and all in the elementary schools, if they don't have an older student, and it might be due to them, all the communication we do via... But that's just a, it's just a food for thought.
Yeah, I mean, it's also a question of availability, of access, too.
Right. Mr. Montgomery? Yes, Mrs. Augmiron.
Just a comment. I looked at the relationship list and the safety and wellness list, and I couldn't help but connect two things, because there was one that student respect for adults and for each other, and how students treat each other, but then I looked at the safety and wellness one, and I'm looking at priority on mental health issues and bullying, and those also go into the student behaviors. And I just think, I'm hoping that we are giving this information to our staff to bring these issues to the forefront, because you hear it from parents all the time, that bullying, even though we are doing everything we can think of to do to get it, the message across to students, it's still happening. And I think that goes into the, you know, it's morale for teachers, how students treat them, and vice versa. It's also how our students feel about being at school, and it goes to that persistent mental health concern when you've got bullying going on. So I just hope that this is really good feedback, especially from our students, that how they feel in the building that they're going to school, that we're getting this information in the hands of teachers and administrators, so they can begin to look at that more carefully.
Yes.
So what do we do with these results, as far as transmitting this information to staff?
So the schools actually have electronic dashboards that are available to them, so they can disaggregate this data further, looking with their leadership teams for their strengths and weaknesses within their own data. They can look at the percentages, as well as the means, but also look at that in comparison to other schools at their same level, so they can have a comparison group.
Is this any part of their school improvement plans, or does that, is this foundational for that work?
Yes.
Or do we follow up to see how things are going?
Yes, so the schools are working on their, updating their school improvement plans. I think they have until October to do that, if I'm not mistaken, and they'll be using these results to update their goals.
Mrs. Augmiron, if I might add, I think you bring up an excellent point, in that while this data, when we look at it from the division perspective, is incredibly valuable, when we think about how to align and allocate resources to support our schools and make sure we're meeting the needs of our stakeholders, a critical piece of this information is the school-level data. And so I'm really pleased that we were able to provide that data dashboard to our administrators, so they can access their school data, and as was mentioned, do some comparisons and really dig deep into that, so as they can see what rises to the level of importance in their school community may not match what we saw on the screen here, when we're looking at it from the division perspective. And certainly, our central support teams, and particularly our directors who support our principals, are very keyed into this data and are able to work with their individual schools when it comes to growing in some areas, and also acknowledging some areas where they may be seeing some strengths, and helping share those success stories across the division in areas where schools may be struggling with similar issues.
Thank you. Anyone else? One question I had with the responses on parents regarding ESL learners and those, do we, was that, were those questions asked of everyone, or was there a way to say, does your student participate in ESL, and if so, give us the feedback?
Yes. So it was the second one. So they were asked first whether their child received any English language services, and then, if so, they were provided additional questions specific to their experiences on that, on those teams, as well as how the school works with them.
Okay, good. That's important. And then the only other observation I would add, and I think it may have been touched on already, if you look at student responses, the fourth lowest was, "Students at my school respect adults working here." And if you look at staff responses, the third lowest was, "Students at this school and our division respect adults working here." So obviously, both students and adults feel like the adults are disrespected. And so, and I'm sure that there's some schools where that is certainly not the case, and there's some schools where the responses were more negative, perhaps, but for it to be across the division and to be the third and the fourth response of students and staff members, who are the people who would have the most knowledge of it, is a sort of an antenna-raising response there, I believe, so.
Well, it goes right to our teacher morale, student morale, retaining good teachers, all of that. It all goes hand in hand. So, yeah, I'm glad with at least information that we can take forward.
And it's our cornerstone. Everything's relationships.
There were also positive things. There's at least one adult in the building that cares about me, and others thought that as well, but as across the board, there was a, you know, maybe the students who were responding saying, "I don't disrespect the teacher," but there's a tremendous, or the staff, but there's other within the building itself, there's some stuff. But anyway, that's one that we definitely need to tease to find out what exactly it meant, so we can figure out what exactly we do to help folks. So, all right, wonderful. And I know that there's, so what's the next step with this data results?
So the division leadership team is going to be working on developing some action steps related to the opportunities that we've identified, and they're going to follow up with an additional presentation for you on that.
And when would that be, approximately?
I would say, probably a number of things will come forward early in the fall, so it won't be long. And then, you know, as was mentioned, I think a key follow-up piece, which we won't be presenting on, or the central team, is the follow-up in each individual building, and that will be where our directors who work with the principals will be making sure that this data has been reviewed at the site level, and any additions to school improvement plans are made.
I would think as the Board receives feedback of what's being... I would think as the board receives feedback of what's being done at the division level, I think it would be important for the board to be told, so all schools now have had their staff feedback, and all schools, you know, some timeline things. I certainly don't believe that anyone would ask an individual school come in and present their entire results and their entire plan or anything else, although there may be some highlights to share. But I do think that the board should be told, everybody now has 100% realizes what needs to be done and 100% have a plan.
We can certainly provide some follow-up related to what's happening at the school sites in addition to anything we're going to take action on at the division level related to the results.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else before we leave that? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And for the next item, I am seeking the board's approval for the addition of two full-time equivalent FTE positions to the 2019-2020 complement. These positions will provide K-2 math coaching support and behavioral resource support for Glenly Elementary School for the 2019-2020 school year. Seeking approval for those two positions.
I was, I noted that we were, I thought we were going to have someone present.
We are certainly able to answer any questions anyone might have related to the addition.
I beg your pardon. Members of the board, are there any questions, first of all, regarding that? If there are not, is there a motion that we approve the superintendent's request and approval, or a recommendation for the 2.0 full-time equivalent positions?
Can we get a third one?
You've got to get two to get three.
Mr. Gemmerson.
Thank you. Reverend Cooper has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Augur, and all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, it's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you for your approval of those critical positions. Next is the recommendation that the school board approve a revised 2019-2020 school calendar as is coming forth from the Calendar Committee, and Dr. Tygen is here to answer any questions regarding the request for this, which involves a change in making March 3 a student holiday Staff Clerical Day as a result of the presidential primary that's scheduled for that day. And as I said, Dr. Tygen can certainly answer any questions related to that change.
Members of the board, are there any questions regarding this, or even comments? I know this is a sort of a repeat performance for what we did in the spring, and I think it would probably be the practice that we'll consider strongly going forward, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would just like to thank the staff for listening to the parents that brought this to our attention and for the staff taking the time to look into it and to come up with a plan that will meet those needs, so thank you.
Agreed. Can I take that as a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Been moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The calendar is so revised. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll be seeking the board's approval on revisions to a number of policies which were reviewed at the last meeting, and Mr. Sorenson is available to answer any questions related to the policies. And we'll begin with my request for approval for revisions to policy P-6-03-003 Residence.
Could you just give us just, so it'd be all tied together, just tell us briefly what that revision involves?
Of course, Mr. Montgomery. Members of the board, the proposed revision to this policy allows the parents of military children to register the children remotely or in person for courses and academic programs in the school division.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's proposed revision to policy P-6-03-003?
So moved.
Been moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The revision is adopted.
Thank you. Next is the recommendation that the school board approve proposed revisions to policy P-6-09-016 Suicide Prevention.
And the proposed revisions clarify the recommended procedure for notification beyond following the crisis management plan, and this policy was presented to you on June 20th. We've had it posted for comment, and we have not received any comments from the public.
Thank you for that, sir. Members of the board, are there any questions, comments, suggestions? Is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's proposed revision to policy P-6-09-016?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Augur. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The proposed revision is adopted.
Thank you. Next, we're seeking the board's approval for proposed revisions to policy P-6-18-003 Directory Information.
The proposed revisions clarify circumstances under which directory information can be released, and again, this was presented to you on June 20th initially. It's been posted for public comment since that time, and we have not received any comments.
Thank you, sir. Members of the board, are there any questions? If there are no questions, is there a motion for adoption of the, or approval of the proposed revision to policy P-6-18-003?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Cock. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the policy is so revised and adopted.
Thank you. And the final request for policy revision this evening is related to revisions for policy P-11-08-002 Tobacco-Free Schools.
The proposed revisions expand the policy to include distribution of tobacco products. Consequences of use, distribution are outlined, including referrals to resources to help overcome tobacco addiction. And again, this was presented to you initially on June 20th and has been posted since that time for public comment, and we have not received any.
Thank you, sir. Members of the board, are there any questions regarding the tobacco-free schools policy revision? If there are not being any, is there a motion to adopt the revision as proposed by the superintendent?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Augur. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, the revision is adopted.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, I'm seeking the board's approval to accept the ESSA School Improvement Grant Funding in the amount of $1,346,366.97 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Members of the board, are there any questions about this particular grant? If there are not, is there a motion that we adopt the superintendent's recommendation for acceptance of the Virginia Department of Education, ESSA School Improvement Grant in the amount which she just provided to us?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Cock. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The grant is accepted.
All right, thank you. And next, staff is pleased to provide an overview and a progress report of where we are to date in relation to exceptional education. You'll recall that the board received a number of presentations throughout last school year related to findings from the Special Education Review, and so we are here to receive an update. Dr. Hughes?
Okay, good evening, Chairman Montgomery, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. As Dr. Cashwell said, I'm Leslie Hughes, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent for the Division of Learning. And as she stated in a few minutes, Ms. Davenport, who's the Director of the Department of Exceptional Children, will provide an update on the work that's happened this year, as well as some visioning for goals moving forward. But before she begins, I wanted to take an opportunity to thank the board for your support for exceptional education, and also your support as we move forward with the transition of the department to the Division of Learning. We're very excited for that merger, because as we look at opportunities for Amy's passport, especially opportunities such as the viable curriculum and the KH12 Literacy Plan, when staff is sitting at the table working, we can really look at opportunities for all learners, and we have departments represented who ensure that vision for all learners. So we're very excited. As you know, the department's been under the leadership of Dr. Hamlet for years, and she provided exemplary leadership, and I want you to know that Donnis and I have met several times, well, actually every day, since Monday, to ensure that I understand that vision and that we will not miss a beat, and we will continue to transition so that all exceptional learners are taken care of, and that, again, as we look at our work, that we ensure that we're looking through the lens of all learners in Enrico County. So I'm going to turn it over to Donnis at this time, and she'll give you the update.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Cashwell, thank you for this opportunity to share some of the progress that we've made in exceptional education and to update you on our outstanding goals moving forward. As you may recall, throughout the different subcommittee presentations last year, there was tremendous similarity and overlap among the many of the goals and objectives that each subcommittee produced. At the end of the 2018-2019 school year, the leaders of each of the subcommittees came together to synthesize their findings and to develop a concise and streamlined plan for moving forward. The four goals I will outline in this presentation represent the individual objectives of each of the subcommittees and will guide the work of our department and our stakeholders moving forward. In addition, as we continue this work, the subcommittee members and our community partners will continue to have a voice and the opportunity to provide feedback and input as we work together to achieve our goals. Think I missed something. First of all, HCPS is committed to provide comprehensive and effective services for students with disabilities across our school division. As highlighted in the program evaluation, we have high numbers of students with disabilities who are educated in inclusive settings, and we also have a large number of students who receive services in the private day setting as their needs exceed what can be provided within a comprehensive setting. We will work together to continue to strengthen our continuum of services for students with disabilities so that students can be maintained and supported in their least restrictive environment. To meet the goal of comprehensive and effective services, task forces have been developed to initiate the design of zone programs to support students with emotional disabilities, reading disabilities, and targeted post-secondary transition needs. By January of 2020, we will have developed a targeted plan for providing more specialized services for middle school reading, and by May 2020, we project we will have a specified proposal for specialized support for students with emotional disabilities. We are working to build programming based on the model used in Bliss, which incorporates both direct student services with teacher coaching in order to maximize the impact of existing staff and any additional complement. I'm excited to announce that we're on track in our plans to initiate the Career Skills Exploration Specialty Center at the campus of Virginia Randolph in fall of 2020. We will collaborate with the Department of Aging and Rehabilitative Services, or DARs, to use existing space and complement to design a program that will provide students expanded opportunities for technical training and certification, along with job coaching and job placement in the community. Our inclusion task force is up and running. This task force will strengthen our division's definition and vision of inclusion for students with disabilities, and will lead the charge in developing curriculum resources that will empower teachers to support students with more significant disabilities to engage in more rigorous content activities alongside their typically developing peers. And finally, we are continuously working to build the capacity of our teachers to meet the needs of students with disabilities throughout the school division. For the 1920 school year, the Exceptional Education Department will be collaborating with the division's stakeholders to support new teacher professional learning communities, middle and high school co-teaching professional learning communities, and multiple school-based department boot camps, to build teachers' capacity in both the procedural elements of special education and the design and implementation of specially-designed instruction. We already have an extensive library of web-based training opportunities available to both teachers and administrators through the Schoology platform, and we will continue to add to those resources. By strengthening the continuum of supports and services available to students with disabilities, we're working toward our second comprehensive goal of ensuring that all students have access to a viable curriculum which enables them to reach their fullest academic potential. We're so excited that the Department of Exceptional Education has been integrated into the Division of Learning. The integration will further the collaborative work that was already in place between instruction and instructional support, and we believe that the integration will expand upon and strengthen existing lines of communication and lead even further to a sense of collective responsibility for the success of students with disabilities in our school. The Division of Learning Content Specialists have been working diligently to develop content area-specific curricular resources for our teachers, and the Exceptional Education Specialists and coordinators will continue to partner alongside the content specialists to support the accessibility and applicability of the resources for students with disabilities. In addition, we are excited to announce that for the first time ever, each Integrated Services classroom will have access to consistent curriculum resources that can be easily differentiated to meet the individual needs across the division. Teachers will access the training for this curricula through the Life Ready 2 Conference, and the Integrated Services Coordinators will provide coaching and support for its implementation throughout the school year. In addition to the curriculum development and training for teachers, the Exceptional Education Department is working to ensure that school-based administrators have the tools that they need to support teachers in co-taught and self-contained classrooms. We're collaborating to strengthen and streamline the lookpours for walkthroughs and support for both collaborative content classes and self-contained Integrated Services classrooms. One major element of the Special Education Review dealt with the facility and programming provided in our public separate facility, the Virginia Randolph Education Center, which is a part of the campus of Virginia Randolph. This campus also houses our High School Alternative Education Program, the Academy of Virginia Randolph, the PACE Program, and the Success Program. In order to move special education programming in our division forward, we recognize that we must develop and promote a renewed and revitalized image of the Virginia Randolph The Exceptional Education Department and Virginia Randolph Education Center have already been in collaboration to increase the training opportunities for their teachers and instructional assistance. We will be continuing the work of the VREC Program Development Team with the goal to design a comprehensive approach to alternative education that will be a support for both students with disabilities and students in general education who need an outside-of-the-box approach for instructional delivery that can't be provided in a comprehensive setting. This alternative education model will build on the Community Learning Center approach. To develop this approach, we will need to expand upon our existing partnerships with community stakeholders and the Enrico Education Foundation. By designing programming that is not only specified for students with emotional disabilities, but which incorporates the Community Learning Center approach, we will be able to support students in an inclusive environment that does not segregate them from their typically developing peers. In addition, by making the Virginia Randolph complex a community services hub, there will be an increased visibility and celebration of the wonderful services that are provided for the students who attend there. Our goal is to have a specific plan for this program defined by August of 2020. Of course, we are entering into this process with the understanding that the existing facilities are not adequate to house the programming and services that are needed, so we'll continue our collaboration with our partners in operations and finance to further our goals toward a state-of-the-art facility that will be appealing to and supportive of the students and families who access it. Finally, each of our subcommittees targeted the need to continue and optimize the communication with and engagement of our students, families, and community partners. We're very excited about the progress that we've made toward this specific action items that have been outlined for this goal. The Exceptional Education Department, Family Engagement Department, and Special Education Advisory Committee collaborated to develop a post-second, post, I can't speak, post-special education meeting survey that team members will have access to following each meeting to provide specific feedback regarding their experiences. This data will be able to be sorted by school and meeting purpose, and we will use the data to identify specific areas of excellence to build upon, as well as opportunities for growth throughout the division. In addition to the survey, there are already plans in place to continue the professional development opportunities available to building administrators and teachers in special education and family engagement. We're creating vet videos which model successful IEP meetings and eligibility meetings that will be used for teacher training. We have also updated our IEP meeting norms, which are posted in conference rooms in each school. These norms reiterate our commitment to ensuring that parents have an active voice in special education processes and that meetings are conducive to promoting the needs of the student. The Department of Family Engagement has created family engagement toolkits, which have been distributed to each school. They're in the process of being distributed to each school. These kits contain resources to inform families about the different services and resources that are available to them in both general education and special education realms. And we're excited to continue our collaboration between the Family Education Resource Center and the Special Education Advisory Committee to provide opportunities for family learning throughout the school year. This year, we will again host the Autism Community Night Out and Transition Fair on March 31st to kick off Autis- March 31st to kick off Autism Awareness Month in April, and will partner with numerous community agencies throughout the year to provide targeted training opportunities as requested through the parent survey that the CAC conducted in June of 2019. As you can see, we are busy supporting the growth and development of special education programming and services in Henrico County Public Schools. We're committed to providing exemplary support for the students in our schools and are excited about continuing the partnerships across the division that will allow us to do so. On the screen, you see the HCPS Exceptional Education Mission Statement that outlines our core commitments as a department. As we continue to make progress toward these goals, we will define the critical pathway toward each one and provide you with periodic updates on our progress. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, members of the board. Are there questions?
I'll go first.
Yep. I think Reverend Cooper has a question.
Thank you again for just the work that everyone is putting in, especially under the auspices of your leadership. I have a couple of quick questions. Do you have a specified timeline for implementing all the moving parts? The reason I ask that is because, you know, when we come up with our goals, I think that they should have timelines and also measurables. And so it's kind of, for me, it's not clear on what our timelines and goals, measurable goals are. And then, secondly, do we have any budgetary recommendation and cost analysis for the recommendations?
So at this time, we have created somewhat of a, I don't want to say nebulous timeline, but a nebulous timeline in that we have timeframes that the proposals are due. For example, the proposal for reading zone programming and ED zone programming, those may require additional complement, and I've asked that our teams have those completely developed by October so that they can be a part of this year's budget recommendations. We've scheduled monthly meetings to really define the programming that we want to build at Virginia Randolph Education Center. We want to define kind of that pie in the sky, what's going to do, what we need to get our students where they need to go. And my hope is that we can do that throughout this school year and have some definites in place to have a budget proposal for that programming in place by next school year.
So basically, right now, we don't have a timeline and we don't have budget.
We don't have definites, no.
So when can we expect that? Because, I mean, this is great because it does give me kind of like what our targeted process is, but then what's the next step as far as, okay, this is when we look to implement, this is how it's going to be implemented, this is how we're going to measure it, this is the cost as far as projection, and this is our budget request. That's, I'm a visual person, so for me, that's kind of helpful.
So the proposals for the zone programs should be completed by October of 2019, and those will include budgetary proposals as well as those targeted timelines and those measurements for effectiveness. And the proposal for Virginia Randolph, I'm hopeful will be in place, I'm hopeful by May of 2020, but we're working on that now. I really want to make sure that we do a good job of giving a comprehensive view of what's needed for that program. I'm in the process now of going through a facilities checklist, kind of just looking at what's existing and defining what's existing more structurally than what we had in place, and then we're going to move forward with our monthly check-ins there.
And so I guess we'll be updated kind of when, you know, that as far as, again, just to kind of making sure it's specific.
Yes, sir.
Because, I mean, you know, again, this is great idealistically, but then realistically, when can we expect, how much is it going to cost?
Yes.
You know, that being said, I notice if we could go to the slide that talked about optimized communication and maximize engagement, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, a lot of that work is going to be done in collaboration with our Family Engagement Department, correct?
Correct.
So do we have a budget, or is it the same kind of answer, you know, identified with Family Engagement in regards to how much that's going to cost and the implementation strategy in place as well?
So luckily, much of the work, though, and I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, I was just going to say, I might be able to jump in and provide a little more direction. And again, since Donna and I have been working together since Monday, but what I would like to charge her and the team with is to provide a critical path for each goal so that there is an exact workflow and a work project, so that each goal will be broken down with the timelines and any budgetary requests. And so it is our hope that we can bring that to you early in the fall so that you'll be able to operationalize each one of the goals and see how that will move forward. Now, we wanted just to provide you a high level of the goals and where our work was going to take us, but, you know, we will move forward and we will break each one of these goals down and provide you an update on each one as we move into budget season so that you can see how that might impact the work of the division.
So this is the, this is the beginning of the process?
This is sort of a high-level overview.
I got you, and then it's macro.
So that you can see where we're going and to, you know, keep you up to date, and then we'll bring you back a specific workflow.
Thank you. Last question.
And I will tell you, for this goal, for the family engagement component, much of the work is already in place to be implemented August, September, when the students return. We've developed the survey tool. It's a virtual survey, so there was very little cost associated with that, and grant funds were used to create those family engagement toolkits, which are already present and ready to be shipped out to schools in the process of being shipped out.
Will the kit be available, one per school or one per parent? How does that work?
They are one per school at this point, but each kit contains multiple resources. So the kits probably at this point have resources for 30 families per school.
Okay.
And then they can be replenished as they're needed to be.
So, I got a quick question. So when was the report issued, the main report?
It was issued in October of, it was on the first slide.
It was 18, right?
October of 2018.
Aren't these the same goals from that report in 18? The different ones?
No, the report actually resulted, and I know the numbers get confusing, in 27 recommendations.
Yes.
Those 27 recommendations were broken up for further review by five subcommittees.
Correct.
Then each of those subcommittees said, based on these, whichever recommendations they were focusing on, whether it was related to staffing, whether it was related to programming, this is what we would say we are able to move forward on, or these are things we already have in motion. And so they put some recommendations together. The five committees had recommendations that were all aligned into these four overarching goals that will serve as where we know we need to move.
Well, I agree. I think she just kind of answered my question. Basically, we're going to do a critical path. We don't have it yet.
Right.
So we do not have timelines. We do not have budget, correct?
Not at this moment.
Right.
We don't have specifics.
Right, okay.
We know where we're going, but we want to make sure that we can provide you with critical paths so that you can see each step along the way.
Thank you.
And I'd say to Donna's point, a number of them were near-term, and so we were able to begin work on those right away, where others are clearly going to be long-term projects that are going to require some planning and some goal-setting and timelines within each.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Are there other questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pike.
I just want to thank everyone for their work, and I'm just curious about what's been reported this afternoon. Is that going to be available to the general public in terms of people that are out there that are watching and know that, you know, that this is a big, important piece for the school board? Are we keeping the public aware that, yes, we are making progress, we're working towards these things, here's the first set of information kind of thing? I'm just curious about that because I think people probably want to know where we are with what's been done so far.
Yes, sir. Historically, we, of course, have had the presentations available through Board Docs, as all of our school board presentations are. We've also posted them on the school webpage as far as a direct link on the main county page and the special education webpage so that people have access to multiple areas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pike. Are there other questions? If it would, Madam Superintendent, if we could maybe at, I don't know about, I won't be here for the second meeting in August, but early on, could we get a, just have, maybe at a break, we could take a look at one of the kits and see what's in it and what it looks like. Certainly don't pull one out of a school.
Great idea.
But if we could, if we could have one, it might be useful, I think, to see some of the resources that are being put in people's hands.
We'd be happy to bring those and share.
And I know that this information is being shared with the CAC committee as well, so that's an important part of the communication because those folks are really, not only they happen to develop solutions, but they're obviously plugged into the schools. So to Reverend Cooper's point, I don't think we can move too fast, except unless we move faster than a good result will provide. So we want to move, I think they would say, with all deliberate haste, so as we move forward. Thank you. Thank you for the great questions, too, from the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm seeking your approval for the appointment of Sandra Fiona Bessie Bushnell of the Three Chop District as a new member of the Special Education Advisory Committee for the 2019-2020 school year.
Thank you, members of the board. It's their motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation for the appointment of the new member to the 2019-20 CAC.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Auger. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor, indicate a saying aye. Any opposed? As have it, the appointment is made. Thank you.
Thank you. We're pleased to have our new member of our CAC committee. All right, the next item comes in relation to my request for your approval to approve the redistricting committee member recommendations. And so this evening, we do have Mr. Sorenson as well as Matt Cropper here, who's working with us on this redistricting project, to answer any questions you may have related to where we are in the process and, of course, related to our request for your approval of those individuals.
Thanks, Dr. Cashwell. As Superintendent said, Matt Cropper, most of you know Mr. Cropper. Mr. Cropper will be with us the next several months, leading the citizen community groups through the redistricting process. So Matt's in town today, and we've been working with him all day. Just wanted to make Matt available to you to answer any questions you have leading up to your vote on the committee that Matt and his staff put some names together to put before you. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Sorenson, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell. Thank you for the opportunity to be here again. As Mr. Sorenson said, I'm here just to be available for any questions you may have and also to give you a little bit of an update on our progress. We have recommended the committee for the elementary and the secondary redistricting groups that we're going to be working with coming up in the fall, and those are ready for your approval or comment. And once that occurs, then we will begin the process of notifying committee members and also those who are not selected, letting them know if they have or have not been selected, and going through a series of RSVPs to make sure that we get everybody to confirm or not to, or choose not to choose, not to serve on this committee. So other than that, we are working on preparations for the September kickoff. There's some, the first meeting is September 9th, Public Information Session, where we're inviting the public to come out and learn about the process, and we're also working, going to be working with the committee and orienting the committee that same evening. And then the 11th will be another Public Information Session, the same topic, just giving that public two chances to come out. And then we'll be working with the secondary group on the 11th after the Public Information Session. And then from there, we kick off a whole series of meetings with the committee and the public and things like that. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have and be happy to answer anything, help any way I can.
Thank you. Members of the board, are there questions or comments? I know we've had this material to review for a while now.
Hey, Quiklin.
Yes, please.
Could you review the process again of how you're going to inform the committee members? I know we had, just review the numbers of applicants that we had, how many we do, you know, ultimately need, and the process for, because I know people are listening, would like a little more detail on that.
Yes, ma'am. So we had about 385 total applicants for, to serve on the committee. And there are, the way it's structured is there will be one committee member per school. So the elementary committee will have 45 members, and then the secondary committee will have 21 total members. So as you can see, we couldn't select all of the committee, the applicants. I will say that all the applicants were very strong, and it was not easy to do, but we mapped out all the applicants so we could see the geographic distribution and make sure that they are all coming from the schools so that they are, they can give us input as it relates to where they're living. And so there's good geographic distribution of the committee members that I have recommended and feel really strong about their, about the people who were intending to serve on this committee. But there are people who were not selected who would certainly be very strong candidates to serve in here. So it's unfortunate, but I just want the public to know that, you know, just because they weren't selected doesn't mean that they weren't qualified. And so what we intend to do is send out letters, and I will send out an email to all of those who were selected, inviting them to RSVP. We're looking for an RSVP by August 18th so that I can make sure that I have a good, everybody confirmed in preparation for the September meetings. And we will also notify all those who are not selected and letting them know that they were not and telling that story as well, that it wasn't necessarily because of their application, but just because we can only pick so many people. And once I notify them, I intend to notify the applicants and those who were and were not selected this evening, if possible. And I will go through a series of phone calls next week to try to make sure that they did receive the application and that they're considering it and giving us, getting back to us as soon as possible.
And just one other question. I know that there are upcoming sessions that are going to be listed in this information as far as information sessions and that kind of thing. Can you tell just us and the listening public what to expect at those initial meetings in September?
Yes, ma'am. So the September meetings for the public, there'll be, we're kicking it off with Public Information Sessions. So really, what it is, is informing the public on the process, our objectives, our criteria, the timeline, and our process for going through this redistricting study. It's more of an informational meeting, and we won't be surveying the public or asking them for, to fill out any survey and things like that at this time. But we will be introducing a lot of tools and things that are available for the public and that we'll be working with on the committee, including a general feedback form and things like that where they can provide input at starting, you know, at any time. Then we will be working with the committee through a series of meetings starting in September and going all the way through, I believe, till March or April. And that will be just a course of meetings where we're, one, the meetings are structured to, we have an elementary committee meeting one night, and then we'll have the middle school, high school committee meeting on a different night. And we'll be working in sync with both committees and also trying to merge their thoughts together as, with focus on feeder patterns and things like that. But those meetings are welcome to the public. The public is welcome to observe those meetings, those committee meetings, but we just ask that they don't participate. So they, we, very common for us to have public members observe the process from the back, and all the materials that we'll be sharing with the committee will be made available online, so we try to enable as transparent of a process as possible. So you'll, it's not uncommon to see members of the public who are not on the committee have the same kind of binders that the committee has, and they manage their own materials.
One last thing, and this is, well, for you and for the staff. We had 385 people who were interested in doing this. We only have a limited amount of space, because you can imagine a committee of 385 people. It's an unwieldy thing. The only request I have is that we had so many people interested, I think it is, we're sort of duty-bound to find something else for those other folks to do. So for example, at these public information sessions, if we, if the staff or somebody could keep a list of those other people who were not chosen, let them help in some way. Pass out forms, be facilitators, some way. They have volunteered there and interested in being a part of the process. The last time we did this roughly 10 years ago, there were over 400 people that applied, and they, somebody found a job for all 400 of those volunteers to do. And oftentimes, let's say, for example, you know, we get those big maps, we have a big room full of those maps. There were people that were just directing, answering questions. Those 385 people, I think, are a good resource for us to use and give our staff a little bit of a break. So if we could, I think, put some attention on that, I think our constituents would really appreciate it, being included in the process in some way.
Okay. I will follow up with the school district about that.
Good. Thank you. Ms. McRae. Wizards, yes.
So I kind of want to take hers quickly. I know last time you briefly gave a synopsis of the process. Can you give a Cliff Notes version of how, what was the, what were the parameters that you used to get this number, just briefly? Because I know you said it already, I'm cognizant of that.
Yes, sir. To arrive to the recommended list of committee?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So we collected the applications, and then we mapped out all of the applicants so we could see where they all live. We wanted to make sure that there wasn't a number of applicants coming from the same neighborhood or subdivision, for example. We also reviewed all of the applications, and then myself and two other staff members gave scores based on objectivity, thoughtfulness, and experience. And so we did, each independently did some scores, and then we weighted those based on object, we gave objectivity a stronger weight, and then thoughtfulness of their application to see how thorough were their answers, were they one-answer question, one- to see how thorough were their answers, were they one-answer question, one-word answers, or did they give some thought to the application and actually, you know, spend some time to give us some good thoughtful answers? And then their experience, we're looking for people with, from all different walks of life and just a broad base of experience, be it volunteer time at schools, or teachers, or parents, or grandparents, people who don't have children in the school division. We're looking for just a broad base of people to give us input, so that we can have a good relative sample of the population in Henrico County.
Thank you for that. Mr. Chairman, one more question. Will the meetings be held at various locations throughout the county, the magistrate districts, or will they be at a central location?
They will be held in the east end and the west end, so there are different locations throughout the process.
So we will have it covered as far as both sides of the county?
Both, I can't say every magistrate district, but both sides of the county, most definitely. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Very good, thank you. I do want to just say that, as Mrs. Augbrun said, and Reverend Cooper and everyone else agrees, that we want those who applied to be involved to the greatest degree possible. But also throughout the process, there'll be times when there'll be formal chances for the public to participate directly, but there's also multiple opportunities for people to participate informally. So if there's information to be shared, if they see something, read something, I would encourage everybody to ask, it's not a wait-to-the-end-to-ask-your-questions exercise. So nobody should feel that if you're not on the committee, that you cannot participate at some level throughout the process. But there will be a committee structure that we'll operate through. But everybody should have an opportunity to express themselves, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask something? Please.
Yes, please.
Just want to follow, one thing Mr. Cropper said. So we do plan to post the timeline on our website early next week, probably Monday, but early next week. The other thing, Mr. Cropper is going to notify people that were selected to serve on the committee, as well as those that were not selected. He's going to notify those folks tonight, probably. He will follow up with the folks that were selected on Monday. We also want to provide the courtesy, since people are volunteering a lot of the time to serve on this committee, we want to have the opportunity to notify them directly before making the list public, so they hear directly from us instead of from a neighbor or friend or somebody. So our plan now is, once Mr. Cropper's been able to reach all the folks that are on the committee, confirm that they want to serve on the committee, make the list public on our website later next week.
And I think that makes sense, because somebody's circumstance may have changed, that they're unable to serve, and if they have an opportunity to demonstrate or to share that, and we can move to a.
Ask another question?
Yes.
Since, a follow-up, since you just stated what you stated, and since he just said what he said, let's say that the individual that you all chose at first cannot or will not do it, do we have already in place others that we're able to quickly replace that person with?
We do. So most of the schools have a couple of top recommendations. We will come back to the selected board member. If somebody declines, we'll come back to the board member to discuss that, and hopefully have it for you at the August 22nd board meeting. Mr. Cropper said that folks have until the 18th to RSVP. That's tight, but that should give us time to come back on August 22nd.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Very good. All right. You got your work cut out for you. And so do we. All right, we have, oh, we do need to, so we do need to approve. So members of the board, we do need to take action to approve the update in the recommended committee member, membership. Is there a motion that we approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Cock. Is there a second?
Second.
I figured it would be, by Mrs. Augbrun. All those in favor indicating a capping, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the work begin.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next, we have a number of items under operations, the first of which is an update on the construction for the Brooklyn area elementary school.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Facilities has been working with Mosley Architects on the design and construction planning for the expansion of the existing Holiday Elementary School, which will serve as the new Brooklyn area elementary school. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to Susan Moore, our facilities operator, and Chris Brown, and Stephen Halsey from Mosley Architect. Give you a little brief breakout.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, all. We just wanted to bring you an update on the elementary school, much like we did the high schools. Everything is progressing along. The documents are nearing completion, as is our plan of development. So we wanted to be able to take this opportunity to give you an update and let you see the elevations and the exterior of the building. You will notice, we're calling this the Holiday Elementary School Expansion, with the subtitle of the New Brooklyn Area Elementary School, just so our county residents understand that this is the New Brooklyn Area Elementary School that was planned in the 2016 bond. Stephen Halsey with Mosley Architects, he's a principal with the firm, is here with us to go through the presentation. Chris Brown, our project manager, is here, as well as Adam Byfield, a facilities project manager, to answer any questions. So I'll pass off to Stephen.
Great. Thank you, Susan, very much. We're glad to be back to share with you this information. We, I think we last, last shared this with you back in February, so lots of work has happened between February and now. See if there's a cursor that can show up. Great. So I used the cursor to guide. Just a brief update, we'll show you updated site plan. This goes in front of the Board of Supervisors next Tuesday for the final hearing, so we expect approval shortly thereafter. So this is the final site plan, that was submitted as part of the P O D. Floor plan updates, and as Susan mentioned, some exterior images. The floor plan has really not changed a lot since we met with you all last February. Again, Galaxy along to the bottom of the page, Impala along to the north. Bus access is still off Impala to the north, as well as service for food service and trash pickup and those sorts of things that comes through the bus loop servicing there in the back. Again, the separation of traffic remains, parent drop-off through an expanded parking lot to the north off Galaxy, some medians and some dividers that allows Kim and her staff to really portion that parking lot as they need to throughout the day for a parent drop-off and pickup. Staff parking along the east there, along Galaxy, which is the location of the current bus loop. Again, a main feature of the site is separation of traffic and also the separation of playgrounds, the ability for kids to enter their playgrounds, not really having to cross asphalt and active pavement, which is important. Playgrounds to the south for kids in the lower grades can frequent. And then new paved play area and multipurpose area to the west, where kids located maybe three through five, and the new expansion can access those outdoor facilities without having to cross pavement. So that's a big safety feature. In terms of the floor plan, it's just some modifications as the project is refined, and as we've met with Dr. Hall and Kim and the staff there at Brooklyn, we've really dug into what happens inside the classrooms, what happens inside the library, what happens inside some of the specialty spaces. Again, a unified entrance to the new Holiday, a security vestibule there located to the north. Again, that has to be locked down, so after school starts during the day, you cannot get into the building unless you go through the security protocol. The location of the community room, which is a big feature of the project, again, that's also located off the admin, so that if community groups are using that space throughout the day, access to that space is only through admin and not throughout the rest of the school. So that's, again, a security measure, but also provides a community access to that space. And coming into the building, the clinic located at the end of this corridor, as you take a right and turn down kind of Main Street, the main public spaces are located off that space as well. Gymnasium cafeteria, which is an expanded cafeteria utilizing some of the existing square footage from the existing cafeteria, and then a new cafeteria space. The library located sort of the heart of the building with a learning stair located really as the focal point of this corridor. Again, more of a pod concept, which came out of our workshop process, which we described back in February, where clusters of classrooms circulate around a variety of open and collaborative learning areas that can be used for one-on-one teaching, group teaching, testing, those sorts of things. And then backfilling the, a large part of the existing cafeteria, backfilling that with a clinic, new music room, and also art. Upstairs, again, two more academic pods and a teacher workroom, which kind of anchors the upstairs for teacher use and also passive supervision. And again, the classroom configuration, very much like it is downstairs. In terms of the elevations, one of the things we really talked about during the interview was a question about how we marry a new building to an older building. And we've identified pretty much the exact brick that's on the existing Holiday. So you'll see that brick utilized in these elevations, really up to just the height of Holiday, the existing Holiday. And then we can introduce new, modern materials for the balance of the elevations. One feature of the elevations, too, is this is a courtyard view, kind of looking into the courtyard from those play areas. The one, the two areas where brick does expand up for identification purposes are the two exit stairs at the ends of those academic wings. The main entry focal point, the main front door, the gym to the right of that, and then one of the academic wings further to the right of that. Lots of passive supervision. This is the new administrative area, as you remember on the plan, that has sort of a serpentine shape, which allows that really to kind of connect the new Holiday to the existing Holiday. And with lots of glazing, really provides lots of passive supervision. So the main admin area, conference room, and principal's office all have passive supervision and lots of glass and glazing facing those coming and going to the building. And then the last image is, image of the courtyard, really tied into the library space, a couple of exterior learning areas, a security fence, really allows a safe place for kids to enjoy either structured classroom activities or activities that might emerge from the library, what happens inside the library. Again, a really nice exterior space for the students and the staff to utilize throughout the school year. We might have mentioned back in February, this will be a phased project, even though the functions of Holiday will be modestly impacted just through construction activities. Because of the location of the existing kitchen and some electrical infrastructure, it's going to be phased in three parts, really through the next school year, next summer, and then the following school year. So the need to, right off the bat, construct a new central plant, new mechanical space, new electrical space, new cafeteria, new food service, so the existing food service and cafeteria spaces can remain uninterrupted throughout the school year. Next summer, the completion of those spaces will occur, as well as the beginning of the renovation of the existing music space, or existing cafeteria space and those music spaces. And the big activity next summer is the relocation of the electrical service, which will allow Holiday, the existing Holiday, to remain in operation the following school year. And then throughout the school year of 2021, really the balance of construction, and we anticipate the project being completed in time for school to begin in August of 2021. Next steps is, as Susan mentioned, we're very close to completing documents. We'll begin our final review of our documents toward the end of the month. We anticipate advertising sometimes in early September, receiving bids sometime in early to mid-October, and hopefully coming to you all at the last school board meeting in October for recommendation for award. We anticipate construction happening shortly thereafter in November, and then again, the opening of the new Holiday in fall of 2021. So with that, we'll be glad to answer any questions you might have, or go back and review any information.
Members of the board, are there questions? Mr. Pike, it looks like you may have one.
When this project is completed, square footage for the school, how big?
The new square footage being added is about 82,500 square feet. The total, the total facility will be somewhere in the 125,000, 130,000 square feet. I think the existing Holiday is somewhere in the 45,000, 50,000 square foot range.
About 50 to 60.
Yeah.
Somewhere in there.
So how's that compare to our largest elementary school now, or how's it compared to middle schools and high schools that we already have?
It'll be significantly larger than our typical elementary schools right now. It'll be slightly smaller than our average middle, typically larger than our elementary schools, slightly smaller than our middle schools. The student count that we're looking at is about 1,100 students between the new portion of the building, as well as the existing facility. So that's a little, about a couple hundred students less than our middle schools would hold.
Okay. Dr. Cashwell, I guess a related question that Mrs. Augbrun and I were talking about in terms of administrative staff and managing a facility that size, what are your thoughts?
It's definitely something we're going to think about programmatically as we look at the programmatic design, particularly the immersion program that's potentially planned for the building, and what supports may be necessary for running that programmatically. Also thinking about just even the maintenance and upkeep of the building, that's something we'll certainly be mindful of. So in addition to the space, we'll certainly be looking at additional staff complement, both at the administrative and instructional level, as well as any of the support pieces.
Mr. Chairman?
Anybody else? The only comment I was going to make is, I'm sorry, to just follow up on that, because I know this is new territory for us. And I know our plan is to have one principal. But I'm assuming we're going to have to do sort of a middle school, high school structure by grade level or something with our associates, and it's just a new territory. I'm really fascinated to see how it works. I think it's a brilliant plan. And one, we're going to have to lean on in the future as land becomes more scarce for the expanding population. So I'm excited to see how it works.
Yeah, we are, too. There are a number of models across the state that we can look to, with similarly sized elementary schools, so we'll certainly be taking a look to make sure we're adequately supporting the school.
Yes, Mrs. Cock.
This is something that we've been talking a lot about all summer, with that concern piece, and knowing that it's one principal, we need to realize that that is a principal of 1,100 students, and make sure that we give them all the supports that they need. And really, in essence, look at it as it's two schools in one, and that they have enough administrative staff, but also that that principle is compensated for 1,100 students.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone else? Very good. Thank you. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
It's very exciting. All right. We have three additional items. The first would be the utilities, but Tuckahoe Middle School is there. Superintendent, is there, we've got the information. Are there any questions about that particular item? Is everybody ready to make a decision? I take it, then, that you would like for us to approve the utility?
I would.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, we have before us the superintendent's request and recommendation for approval of the utility easement at Tuckahoe Middle School. Is there a motion to adopt that recommendation?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Augbrun. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cock. All those in favor indicating a capping, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Utility easement is approved.
Thank you. Next, I'm requesting your approval for a change order proposal in the amount of $99,374.66 to the existing purchase order with Slurry Pavers Incorporated for the pavement improvements at Freeman High School.
Members of the board, are there any questions regarding this request? If there are not any, is there a motion for approval, adoption and approval of the change order proposal for pavement improvements at Freeman High School?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All those in favor indicating a capping, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it, the motion carries.
Thank you. And finally, this evening, I'm requesting the school board approve the change order proposal in the amount of $19,683 to the existing purchase order with Colony Construction Incorporated for pavement improvements at Three Chop Elementary School.
Are there any questions for members? If not, is there a motion for approval of the superintendent's recommendation of the change order proposal for pavement improvements at Three Chop Elementary School?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Augbrun. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pike. All those in favor indicating a capping, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it. Quick question, those two additional change orders, the payment of those is coming from mill's tax dollars, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. Which is, it's just a following, an expansion of an existing mill's tax project.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Always important to know where the money's coming from. Anything else?
No. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. That concludes items from the superintendent.
Very good. Members of the board, unfinished items, looks like Reverend Cooper has some unfinished business.
New business.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Is there any unfinished business? All right, there not being any. Reverend Cooper, do you have any new business you'd like to share?
Madam Superintendent, by next minute, can you do me a favor? And I was reading information about ridership in Henrico being up for GRTC. And I noticed that Richmond Public Schools has a program where high school students in the city get free bus passes and free bus rides and local routes in the city. Can we explore the opportunity for that with our students and get kind of some information? And then, second thing, I was excited about my alma mater offering scholarships to our students. students. Can we get, you know, when are we going to hear some more about that?
Absolutely.
Virginia University, those two things.
Yes, so with the first item related to ridership, that is something that I have staff looking into. We're really excited about the potential of, of offering a similar program for our students, so we will be happy to report back and thank you for surfacing that as something to have on our radar screen as expanding opportunities for our students. And in relation to the scholarship opportunity through Virginia State, we, Virginia Union?
Don't do that.
Virginia Union, that's the second time I've done that. I think it's a, it's a terrible, it's a terrible faux pas. Though we do, we have some wonderful partnerships with Virginia State as well. You are right, the one you were remarking about in wanting us to provide information as relation to Virginia Union and we can certainly provide more information related to that. We're very excited about, that was a very generous offer that they put forth.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wonderful. Anything else for?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I would like to thank the staff that was involved with the summer school graduation at Glen Allen High School. Superintendent Cashwell and I had the privilege of being there and we appreciate all the hard work that went into that and the families that were there and for making that happen. And then the second thing, related to the algebra program that we put into effect for this summer, I've heard from one parent that talked about that a little bit. I just wonder how we did with those students, if we could get some feedback on that. And then I, I think it would be important too to see actually how those students do during the course of this school, school year. If there's a way for us to track how this first attempt at working with the algebra this summer, I, I think that's important that we look at that.
It is. In fact, we have been taking a look, we've been monitoring how students were progressing through the summer portions of that online module and tracking completion and, and recognize a number of areas where we can improve and are just generally looking at the overall model. I know I've heard from a few parents, as likely other members of the board has, and we're certainly taking their feedback into consideration as we think about a plan moving forward. So we'll report back to the board on that once we get a, a full picture of where we are.
Very good. Anyone else? Well, before we announce the meeting dates, I will say that, remind those that not this Saturday, but the following Saturday will be the back-to-school kickoff at Dory Park. And the hours of that are what, Mr. Jinks? Nine to one?
Nine.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. I know the schools will be there, the community will be there, it'll be a lot of fun. It was a great event last year and if you're able to come, I will certainly be there to represent the board, but everybody is welcome and encouraged to. The, well, as Reverend Cooper asked, the farmers market is going strong, it's there every Saturday, but it will be in full bloom at the family event. So thank you, Reverend Cooper. If there's nothing further, we do have the announcement of our upcoming meeting, meetings of August 22nd. The work session is scheduled begin at 2:00 PM. That is subject to adjustment as needed, but the monthly meeting will begin at 6:30 PM right here at the New Bridge Learning Center. There being nothing further, this meeting is adjourned.